Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on November 14th, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to declare a quorum, which we do have. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item three is public forum. Marilyn, has anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item four, our superintendent's recognitions with Christine Parks. Would the board members please come to the front of the dais?
He was doing what he was told and waiting till I called him, but that's okay. We...
Our first item is the state qualifier recognition, Tyson Temes, cross-country.
So, we are very pleased this evening to recognize Tyson Temes, who qualified for the 2022 State Cross-Country Championship that was held in Round Rock. And you placed 13th in 6A Region 2, is that correct? With, you ran, it's a little over three miles, right? Like 5,000 meters in like, less than 16 minutes. So, yes, that's amazing. And so Tyson did also compete at the state competition, and you finished 100 something?
Seventh.
To be 107th in anything in the state, Tyson, is a big deal. I mean, it's a huge deal. So, it is, you need to be commended. But anyway, the other really neat fact about this, and y'all may have heard this by now, Mom and Dad, but since we have moved to 6A, Tyson is the first cross-country athlete from Temple High School to go to state since we moved to 6A. So, it is a huge, huge accomplishment. Congratulations. So, congratulations.
Do you want to introduce your parents?
That's my dad.
Hi, Dad.
Did John take some pictures?
Yes, we will, we'll hold them as long as you want for pictures.
No, he didn't do it all by himself.
Oh, that's fine.
And I'm dead.
I want to say one thing about Tyson real quick. The thing that's most impressive, at least to me, about Tyson is his work ethic. I remember I was at a tennis meet here in Temple, and I showed up to go watch our kids compete in tennis, and I saw a student just running all the way across the back. One of the coaches, I said, "Who is that? Is he in trouble? What's going on?" "No, that's Tyson. He's training on his own, doing extra running for the cross-country meet, and he does this all the time." So, I was very impressed with his hard work and that, and a lot of other reasons are why you're, you know, a state-recognized cross-country runner. But congratulations, very proud of you, Tyson. Keep up the good work.
And y'all, y'all are welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave if you need to.
Our second item is the Tasby Business Recognition Program, Johnny's Cleaners.
If we can have Mr. Flores come on up.
He's going to be up here for a while.
Businesses and organizations and nonprofits across Central Texas contribute every day to Temple ISD, and we truly rely on their support. And Johnny's Cleaners is one of these district partners, and we are pleased to share in their generosity this evening by recognizing them as a state-level partner through the Tasby Business Recognition Program. From pressing our seniors' caps and gowns at no charge every year, to consistently supporting Wildcat Athletics, to literally anything that we would ever need, Louis Flores and his team are always ready to support whatever the need may be. And thank you truly for your support. It makes a difference to our students and their families and to the district. So, thank you so much to you and your team.
Yeah, just one again, thanks for everything Johnny's Cleaners does for the district and the students and parents here in the community.
Right, yeah, appreciate it.
Got a little more praise to give you, so we'll head to the next item. Item C is Alumni Spotlight Recognition, Moses Louis Flores, class of 1978.
So, while we had him here, we were going to do this other recognition as well, because one thing that he doesn't love is to be in the spotlight. So, while we have him, tonight, Moses Louis Flores is a proud member of the Temple High School, class of 1978, and he also attended Travis Junior High here in Temple. After graduation, he attended Temple Junior College and earned a degree in business management. I'm not going to share that you said you were a bad student, because you told me that. But however, but you had long been involved in the family business before you ever finished school. Johnny's Cleaners became the family business back in 1971, when his father started it. And Louis' business philosophy is very simple. It's provide exceptional customer service and give back, and that's truly what you've done for over four decades. Your business has expanded across the area, and you've been involved with countless civic and community groups throughout the years. If you know Louis, his kindness and his enthusiasm are contagious, outweighed only by his humility and tremendous work ethic, which he has also instilled in son Ryan, who is here with us this evening. When asked about his favorite memory from when he was a TISD student, without hesitation, he talked about being Temple High School Vice President of the band under Derwood Howard, and that you were a member of the Temple Highlighters. And when asked about what being a Wildcat means to him, "Very promptly, it means everything to me," was Louis' response. I bleed blue, which is true for any and all of you that know him. Temple is his hometown, and he has given him so much, and he appreciates the opportunity to give back. Well, Louis, for these reasons and so many more, we are so proud of you for everything that you have done, and truly, truly are grateful and want you to be in this month's Alumni Spotlight. So, congratulations. So, Louis doesn't love his picture taken, so I wasn't able to get the pre-framed thing done, but we're going to remedy that tonight, and we've got a picture, and so I will deliver, I will deliver his, yes, his alumni sign later on.
Please say if you're placing this.
Yes, I know where to find him. I will, I will personally deliver it.
Well, he is a quintessential Wildcat. I mean, he truly has graduated, and I mean, he always looks for a way to give back. He really does. He loves our kids, he loves our families. It shows in his service and his kindness, and we're just so grateful for you. We really know this community, and we thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Louis, y'all had one of the first Wildcat masks whenever the pandemic hit. I think I was one of the first ones to get them. And you had them out there, ready to go. Yeah, always a Wildcat.
Yes, always.
Would you like to say anything? Okay.
Well, I'll be looking for that picture when I go.
Appreciate you so much, truly, truly. No, 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 y'all go, y'all go, absolutely. And I'll deliver, I will deliver the picture. Great to see you.
Item five is executive hires, Dr. Ward.
Okay, so you remember last board meeting, you approved Donna Alman to be our Director of Budget and Compliance, and she couldn't be here because she was already in a training. And so, we have her here tonight to address the board, and so here is Ms. Donna Alman.
First, I'd like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as the Director of Budget and Compliance in that capacity. I'm honored that you have given me this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to achieving a few superior goals for you. But first, I'd like to take time to introduce my husband, Greg Aliman, of 25 years. I do have two daughters, they were unable to make it, unfortunately. Both have gone through the Temple ISD school all their, all their ti, all their life. Right now, I have a junior named Alyssa Aliman, and right now, she's working on her theater piece for the conference that they're going on to for great fun. But anyways, to go further, now that I would like to share some information on budgeting views and relay what I'm looking forward to. Forecasting and managing a company's budget are integral parts of the budgeting manager's job. An excellent, efficient budget leads to better educational outcome. It gives schools more scope to respond to curriculum changes and allocate resources where they are most needed. As a budget conservator, I would like, I would have the utmost respect for our district educational objects and goals. With that being said, my goals are to optimize every aspect of our budgeting process, from forecasting to providing an accurate, efficient budget every year, to fully utilize our revenue in the best possible way. I want to ensure that Temple ISD community and the district members, such as the students, parents, staff members, taxpayers, have full faith in our ability to utilize our revenue funds in the best possible way by producing optimal educational results. Thus, I want to demonstrate true financial sustainability and transparency in the eyes of our stakeholders. I want to develop excellent communication relationship with our educational leaders, along with providing accurate and compliant budget results that abide by all regulatory laws and our policies. Therefore, I would like to mainly focus on financial transparency, sustainability, efficiency, and optimization of our revenue and our expenditure processes. Thank you for your time.
Donna, I know you've already been approved. First of all, thank you for saying all that in front of our auditor. I really appreciate that. I don't know if you planned it, but the timing couldn't be any better than to do that. But seriously, I will tell you, we are very proud of you. I know you've worked really, really hard on your credentials, and you know, you have stuck with us, and whether you know it or not, I know you were sought after by some surrounding districts, and thanks for choosing us and staying with us. Really appreciate it. On behalf of the board, appreciate you elevating the new position and look forward to working with you. Yeah. All right. Item six is the Board Presence Report. A, Consideration for Approval and Acceptance of the Annual Financial Audit Report for 2021-2022, Dane Legg from Lot Vernon.
Good evening. Well, Dr. Ott stole the words right out of my mouth. What better time to follow up with after Donna about that annual financial report? It is my privilege to introduce Dane Legg with Lot Vernon and Company. Mr. Legg and his team have spent an extensive amount of time reviewing the district's internal controls, policies and procedures, and all activities of the district's funds, to ensure that our annual comprehensive financial report is an accurate and fair presentation of the financial position of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. So, this is truly a district-wide audit, and Mr. Legg is here to present the report for you.
Tonight, you've got two bound copies in front of you. It's my pleasure to present these tonight. As I told Dr. Ott earlier today, be careful when you turn the pages, because the ink is a little wet. But no, all kidding aside, you know, it took a lot to get this done. Y'all had a lot of turnover late in the year that caused some hardships, but powered through it. My hat is off to your staff, your business staff, Callan coming back, Regina, everybody involved, truly getting this done, and this kind of timeframe was a remarkable feat. So, yeah. I'm going to start with the big, the big one. This is your annual comprehensive financial report. This 141-page document contains one opinion letter. Sure, sure, if y'all would like to. The opinion attached to this document is an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, which means this document is in conformance with general accepted accounting principles. We also go through a checklist of, from the GFOA and ASBO, so that, to ensure that you will receive that certificate of excellence in reporting as you have for the past three years. With that, we'll dive in real quickly to the financials. I'm going to start on page 43 with the balance sheet. Similar format to previous years, the, the big change in the format, I would say, is you're, you're kind of moving out of the capital project phase, so capital projects is not presented by itself on this financial, or this balance sheet, which means it actually fits on one page, so it can actually go up on the screen. But I think, as you'll, as we'll discuss later, that'll change next year, but at least for one year, everything fits on one page. Total assets, your first subtotal to the right, 54.6 million. That is up 6.8 million from last year. Your two biggest increases are cash and cash equivalents, which is the first item in that subset, at 37 million, is up 2.4 million over last year. The district's operations brought in about 20.3 million in cash. You spent 4.7 on capital projects and 13.2 million on debt payments to realize that 2.4 increase. Then the fourth item in that subset, your due from other governments, at 13.8 million, is up 5 million over last year. The biggest variation in this, you've got to couple that with the liabilities. So, if you look at the liability section, the main reason for the $3 million increase in liabilities is the fifth item in that subset, due to other governments, at 3.7. So, the net of those two is about 10.1 million for the fiscal year. That net is usually around 8 million, 7 to 8 million each year. The reason for that increase is primarily your stimulus funds. Your ESER receivable was up 1.8 million over last year. Fund balance, the second number from the bottom, 39.2 million, is up 4 million, or 11 and 1/2% over last year. Discuss that with the income statement. If we look over to the general fund real quick, the third number from the bottom, your unassigned fund balance is 28.9 million. It represents 3.7 months' worth of operating expenditures, which is above the optimal that TEA sets at two months, and still meets the board's target of not less than three months of operating expenditures. So, overall, a strong balance sheet, and...
What was ours, 2.1?
What's that?
You said it was over 2, not 3. What was it?
Your, your board target is not less than three months, or...
3.7.
Yeah.
3.7.
Yeah, yeah, though, it's, it represents 3.7 months at this point, based on the audit. Overall, strong balance sheet, just not as much capital projects as we have for the last three years. Any questions on the balance sheet?
The board just changed that policy.
We added that, yes, at least two years ago, if we wanted that to be the target.
With that, let's look at the revenues and expenses on the next page. If you flip to page 45, look at that 11 and 1/2% increase in fund balance. Your first subtotal to the right, same format, total revenue is 137.8 million, up 13.9 million, or 11% over last year. Your biggest increases is the first item in that subset, your local revenue is up about 2.3 million because of a $2.5 million increase in property tax revenue. And the third item in that subset, your federal program revenues at 25.8 million, is up a little over 10 and 1/2 million from, from previous fiscal year. Seven and 1/2 of that is your stimulus money, is over last year by 7 and 1/2 million, and then your child nutrition federal revenue is up over 2 million from last year. Total expenditures for the district, your next subtotal down is 133.8 million, down 4.9 million, or 3 and 1/2% over last year. Your biggest decrease is going to be four numbers above that. Your capital projects, obviously, at 4.7, it's down 12.4 million compared to last year. The biggest increase, I would say, is the stimulus money. So, it increased your revenues, and in that other special revenue column, those expenditures are up about that 7 and 1/2 million also, across the object codes, for spending those federal funds. The next section is your other financing sources. You see some big numbers there, 6.7 million in, 7.7 out, pretty much net to zero, and this is where, this is the recording of your refunding issue. You issued new debt to replace old debt, netted pretty much to zero for this fiscal year, giving us a total net change in fund balance. Third number from the bottom, a little over 4 million, and that is our 11 and 1/2% increase in fund balance.
So, that's, we're showing that we're putting 4.3 in fund balance? What are we putting in?
To, to district-wide, little over $4 million. Any questions on revenues and expenses? From a disclosure perspective, you do have, nothing's really changed in your disclosures, but if you flipped to page 74, we did have to add a subsequent event footnote. Shortly after year-end, you did do the bond issue, the 97 million for the 22 bonds. Nothing affected the financial statements, but because it happened before we issued our report, we do have to disclose that in the footnotes. As it relates to what I talked about last year with the leases, because the district was in their final year of most of the copier leases, we did not have to do any sort of footnote disclosure for the leases. However, next year, you'll have new lease agreements on most of those, which will mean there will be a lot of disclosure for the, for the copier leases in this financial. And then on top of that, we have a new software-for-service side of the lease coming into effect next year, and that will also be footnote disclosed for fiscal year 2023, which I'm sure Brandy and her staff are excited about. My only suggestion there is to get on it early, depending on whether you want to use third-party software to keep up with this, or, or push your vendors to actually give you the documentation so that you can put this together, because if you wait till year end, it's probably going to be too late.
I think we're talking about including those pieces in our Q and A reports and so forth.
Any other questions on the comprehensive financial report? Okay, the other two opinions are part of the other bound document, compliance side, the federal compliance side. There's two opinion there. Page six, there's a nice summary of the whole section. Items, items A and B are those two opinions. One deals, A deals with the internal controls that relates to the financial statements themselves. B deals with the internal controls as it relates to the federal award programs. Both are unmodified or clean opinions with no audit findings. Little past halfway, it identifies your major programs. Child nutrition was audited as major this year, as a normal rotation. And then below that, your ESER funds. Keep in mind, as long as you're getting ESER money, it will be a major program, because the feds have labeled this as a high-risk program. If I look ahead to next year, just to kind of give a little hint, ESER will be major program for sure, and then Title I, it's their normal rotation year for, for being a major program. And then at the bottom, as a result of this testing, you do qualify as a low-risk audit Any questions on compliance? You have a stapled report in front of you that is commonly referred to as the board report. It goes through a scenario of question and answers that I'm required to as an auditor to the board. All of those answers to those questions are a positive nature. When you get to page four, there, there is a laundry list of audit adjusting entries. Keep in mind, these are only entries to create the full accrual financials. There, there were no straight-up audit adjustments to the financials that I just presented to And the only thing I will note as part of this going forward, I know there's been a lot of turnover in the district, I know you're hiring new people. Keep in mind, pay attention to your internal control procedures as you hire new people, as you set up new duties, make adjustments to that, so that your internal control procedures follow what you do from this, this point forward. Any questions?
Members, do we have any questions? This is an approval item. Is there...
I make a motion to approve the acceptance of the annual financial audit for 21, 22, and 22.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor, signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Appreciate all your hard work.
I'd love to stay. I have to zoom to another district, so...
Okay. You're going to miss the rest of the excitement.
I'm glad this one was physical, though.
I do want you to know, we really appreciate you for...
Yeah.
...working with us. I know it's been a little choppy, we've had some transitions and so forth, but you guys have been very patient. We didn't have to ask for an extension, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Ott.
Brandy, I appreciate you pulled it together. I know it's been, it's been a lot. She looks pretty calm right now. You should say her, I do admire her. Day 11, she looks a little different, but anyway, we'll be happy.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Item seven is consent items, A through H1. What is the pleasure of the board for hearing and dealing with these items?
Future items.
Future, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get, yeah. B, any future items? Is there any future items for discussion? All right. And then C, important dates, and Dr. Ott. All right, just a few reminders coming up. This week, we have, we have a full week. The rest of the week, we have Policy Committee, 16th, 17th. We have the TEDC bus tour of the reinvestment zone. We'll have Adrian Kennedy lead us. Definitely request that everybody is on time, because it's going to be a full schedule, and he wants to present some information first, so we can get on the bus and go. Do we meet inside first? Mm-hmm. Yes, we'll meet inside first, just show up to the foyer down here, and then we'll all...
8:20.
What time? Christine, was that 8:20?
It's 8:20.
Marilyn, 8:20, okay. And then, lost my train, oh, Facilities Committee meeting. This is an important meeting, because we'll be going through some infrastructure items related to the bond, and so those of you that are on the Policy Committee, I welcome you to go to that meeting. as well, if you want to be part of that process. Then we have a Special Board meeting, November twenty-eighth. That's actually going to be Senator Pete Flores. He's going to come and do a legislative update on the twenty-eighth, and then the twenty-ninth, the next day. We're going to be spending a lot of time together. And then the twenty-ninth, we're going to tour DeBakey High School in Houston, and we'll be leaving at seven thirty a.m. from the Administration Building. December first, our School Board Retreat over at the Career Center, and that will be exciting. We'll have a facilities piece to that, but we'll also do our team-building pie baking with the culinary students over at the high school. So that'll be a lot of fun. December fifth is the Temple Annual Christmas Parade, and then you have an attachment that has all the fine arts concerts coming up. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ott. Again, now, item seven, consent items, A through H1. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we approve item seven, A through H1 altogether.
Motion by Mr. Gaines?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The like sign, oppose?
James should have stayed.
Oh, we're going to back up.
Item D.
Item D.
Item markets.
Okay, all right. So why don't we amend that motion if you're, if you're, Mr. Gaines, we'll approve item A.
A through.
H1 with the exception of item D. So that's the motion we're voting on and seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, again, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. Item D, interlocal agreement between Temple Independent School District and the City of Temple to provide work-based training and experience for automotive service excellence, ASE certifications. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Myers.
A seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines with Mrs. Suarez, Ms. Suarez abstaining. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Thank you. I'm sorry, I should have caught that, too.
Yeah, overlooked.
No, no, no problems. That's no problems. All right. Item eight, action items, A, human resources. No items tonight. B, academics. First item is Holdsworth Leadership Academy update, and Dr. Adams.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We are excited to come and see you again and bring you an update on our leadership development journey with Holdsworth Center, the Holdsworth Center. So remember, in the spring, I had the Leadership Task Force come and share kind of how we developed our leadership definition, and we've been busily working since then, and so we wanted to give you an update. So if you'll recall, this is our leadership definition, and so through our work with the Leadership Task Force last year, actually, we developed our three categories, which are commit to excellence, connect with all, and invest in growth. And then from there, we developed our competencies, and our goal really was to connect our leadership definition to our core beliefs, those things that you, as a school board, determined in, when you decided what our vision, our mission, and our, and those core beliefs that you have. So we wanted to use that as our foundation and connect that to our leadership definition. But more importantly, as we talk to folks within our, our school district, what we heard from them is we needed to clearly define what those competencies are, what it means to be a leader in Temple ISD, so there's clarity around that, and so folks can understand, how do I ascend to the next level? How can I grow as a, as a leader right where I am in my current role? And so we wanted to provide clarity with that. And so that's where the leadership development definition occurred last year. Since we've been here, we actually have developed role-specific behaviors. We started with the role of principal and assistant principal. And so this summer, at our Administrative Leadership Retreat, we started to talk about each one of those competencies and what those look like, what they sound like, ways that we could develop that in our leaders, how would we know if a, if a leader is principal-ready? And so we've done a lot of work around that, lots of refinement, lots of wordsmithing, lots of drafting. And so now we have role-specific behaviors for principals and for assistant principals. And, and our goal will be to, to further develop that, but, but this is a big lift, and so we're starting with this specific area. And so really, our next steps for the leadership definition are that the superintendent is going to share that with all leadership, our leadership definition with all of our district's stakeholders beginning in January. He's going to start with our kickoff for Temple University, which is our Teacher Professional Development Day on January second. We're super excited about that, and so he'll, he'll have all of our teachers in one room to kind of share the leadership definition. And then I know the Communications Department, Christine, is heading up kind of an opportunity to share that across the, across the district with a series of videos, and, and she's done an excellent job of planning that communication out. We also want to just familiarize the district with the language of the leadership definition. And so when we say it's important to connect with all, we want to call to that when we see evidence of that. And so you might see Dr. Ott's little tweets on when he gives the, they're not little tweets, they're very important tweets, I apologize. So when he, he shoots his tweets out, he'll say, when he gives out a spot-on award, that this person showed commitment to excellence, or this person showed connecting with all, exemplified that. So we want to begin to, to kind of share that across our organization so that we can connect our values in leadership with the things that our folks are already doing. And so we'll be working with our campus teams in the spring as well to, to, to help our principals to recognize that as well. And then we just want to, the last thing that we're going to do is we're going to support the development of the principal pipeline. And you're thinking to yourself, what's the principal pipeline? Well, there you go. The principal pipeline is when, is how we're going to invest in the growth of our assistant principals so we can ensure that we have principals who are ready. This year, we were really lucky. We had no turnover at the principal level, not one. I, I had a hundred percent retention rate, just want everybody to know that, Donna. Okay? So, but we've not ever had that before, and I didn't really realize it until our principal retreat, and Dr. Ott's like, we don't have any new principals. He was texting me instead of paying attention. And that was correct. And so we were very excited about that, but we know that's probably not going to be the case every year. And so we want to really invest. The other thing we heard from our assistant principals last year is they felt we weren't, we needed to invest in them differently. And they wanted to see more, they wanted more opportunities to grow by, by connecting with all of our departments instead of just, you know, focusing on student services. Eric does such a great job of developing them, but they also wanted to grow in, in leadership ways because they want to be principal-ready as well. So here is our principal pipeline. Number one, we really started with focusing on our key messages. And so we wanted them, sometimes when you start to talk to folks about developing themselves as leaders or development, it can seem icky. It can seem like you think I'm not doing a good job. And so we wanted to very clearly communicate that it is the responsibility of growing and developing all, every person in Temple ISD. That's why one of our leadership behaviors is investing in growth. And so when we start to talk about your development as a leader, it doesn't mean that you're doing anything wrong, it's just an opportunity to grow. Secondly, we want to make sure that everybody understands it's critical for us to plan for leadership vacancies. That's just part of what successful organizations do. And lastly, just because you participate in, in development as a leader, it's just because an assistant principal participates in the principal pipeline development, it doesn't mean that this is a competition, and it doesn't mean that there's a guarantee for the job. Because being a principal, being hired as a principal is a lot, has a lot to do with the right fit with a, with a campus. And so we want to make sure that you don't believe that just because you, you know, you do some development activities, ta-da, you get the next principal job, because that's not, that's not accurate, and we don't want to provide any false promises to our, to our folks. And so this is the process that we are going to begin this week, actually. We start, we actually started last week, I think, and so we're starting this week. And so the first step is to, to do an assessment of all our assistant principals. And so the principal supervisor, that's me and Eric, we reviewed the AP assessment with all of our principals and our assistant principals. And we have asked our assistant principals and our principals to complete a self-assessment or an assessment of their assistant principal. And then we're going to ask our principals to really look at, have a calibration activity, we're, we're starting with that, and to look at exemplars of what are those, what do those competencies look like? What is that? When we talk about that role-specific behavior of a principal leading a campus, setting the direction for the campus, what's an exemplar of that? What does that look like? How would we know that's, that's at the level we need it to be? Then we will have all of our assistant principals and principals complete that assessment, and those are to be brought to our principal meeting this week on November. So we will starting our first process. Second step is really calibration, and so making sure that our principals and principal supervisors are very calibrated on what those ratings mean and what, what is, what is a strong piece of evidence to show so that we, because we don't want one assistant principal to receive a rating that means this, and another assistant principal to receive, receive a rating that is, is different. We want everything to be very calibrated because that's, that's the way we can make sure we have a very fair, equitable system. And so we will begin our calibration this week with our principals to prepare for a talent talk, and I'll talk to you a little bit about what that looks like. And then our principals, we're going to submit their recommendations on what level, what area they believe their assistant principal is. And so that's our work, really, this going through to January. Then, step three is goal-setting and development. And because this is a big shift for our organization, we're going to start small and then slowly develop over time. And so our principals, we're going to ask our principals in January to begin to review their assessment results. And so this is where the assistant principal said they were, this is where the principal would say that they are, and they're going to have a talent talk and just really talk about where they are in terms of being principal-ready. We're not evaluating them on the assistant principal behaviors because they already are assistant principals. They're really reflecting on where am I in terms of those role-specific behaviors for the principalship, okay? And so obviously, they will not be exemplary in all those areas because they're not a principal, okay? Then what we're going to do is we are going to shift, we're going to group our assistant principals into three levels of leadership. And so one of our levels is going to be ready leaders. Those are leaders that we believe could take the principalship in the next six months. They're the ones that we're going to look to if we do have an opening this next year. And so we want to make sure that we develop and, and really work with them the most quickly. And so we're going to start with them in, in March. And so I'll ask all of our principals of our ready leaders to have talent talks with them by March, and then they will begin to do goal-setting and development plans. So we're going to look at what are those areas of strength, and, and, you know, these are things that you do really well, and then where are some areas of growth for you in terms of the principal leadership, and then develop some experiences. And it's going to be all on-the-job training. That's the best way that we learn, is when we get to do it in practice and not sitting and, and learning from a book, although that's good, too. And so those leadership experiences will occur April through June in preparation for the possibility that we might have an opening in the, in the, in the summer. Then the other groups, we're going to look at the other assistant principals, and we'll group them in two other areas. They'll either be high-potential leaders, and so those are folks that could take the principalship in one to three years. You know, they're not quite ready, but we have some development to do. And then lastly, emerging leaders. And those are our new, we have, we have several assistant principals who are in their first year of assistant, of the assistant principalship, and they're not, they're certainly not quite ready, but we don't want to not develop them. Remember, if our key message is that we grow and develop everyone in our organization, we have to make sure that everybody's participating in that development. And so their goal-setting and development plans will occur at the end of the school year when they're doing their assistant principal evaluations. That is just a natural cycle that they do with their principals, and then their leadership experiences will start over the summer. Then we'll, we, my role will be to monitor their progress along the lay, so we'll check in with those principals who are working with ready leaders only in the spring, and just kind of give me some progress on how they're doing, how they're developing, and they'll make, they'll meet, the principal will meet with those ready leaders throughout the spring just to kind of give them feedback and check on their progress and prepare them. And then they'll reset any, any changes to their development plans and goal-setting before they leave for the year. And then lastly, we want to make sure that everybody does a reset when school starts if we don't, if we're not very intentional about checking in and making sure that we have, we all understand what our goals are and, and the areas we want to develop and any changes we need to be made. We need to do that before school starts, not after. And so we're going to ask all of our principals to do a check-in in July, and we might have some new assistant principals that we would need to begin that process with if they're, if they're new to us. And so that's what we'll do in July. And so our next steps really, most specifically, is we want to make sure that our principals and assistant principals are really grounded in those role-specific behaviors, so we'll be sharing those with them. We're going to really work on the development part of, of our, of this pipeline to make sure we have really specific experiences for each one of our competencies. Some of the hardest ones are the touchy-feely ones that Donna likes, the connect with all. And so really helping somebody learn how to build trust and have opportunities to do that, that's essential as a leader. But how does that, how do you develop someone and help, and help them to learn how to do that with different groups that maybe they're not used to working with? And so we're going to really work with our principals and leaders to develop some very specific experiences. And then, really, our next step is really to, is to support our principals in conducting talent talks with assistant principals. That's pretty, that's a pretty nerve-wracking thing to sit across someone that you work so closely with on a daily basis and have a really, a really honest discussion about where you are as a leader in terms of being a principal. And so we know we'll have to do a lot of supporting with that and help, helping to prepare them for that, because we want to make sure that it, it goes well and it's received in a positive way of growth and development. So I will now open it up for questions, but we wanted to give you an update.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I'll make a few comments. I think, I think first of all, this, if you look at any, if you look at any high-performing organization, you will see that they have a really good succession model, and that's something that we haven't had, at least not a systemic one in Temple ISD. We've kind of had a hunch, well, we think they do well. We think they're, you know, well, you don't really want to hire based on that. And I think designing experiences for people to go through, that's really going to tell us, that's going to help us distinguish the difference between, hey, they were a good assistant principal, or they're going to be a good principal. Because I do think that we've hired people, not say we've made wrong decisions per se, but we've hired people in the jobs based on what they did in a job that is much different because they were successful as assistant principal. That doesn't always translate. And so this is an opportunity for us to be more accurate and be more in touch with those upcoming leadership posts and putting people in the right position. So very excited about this, appreciate all your work on it, and, and the work our principals will be taking on because, as Lisa said, and we talked to them about this already, we want, and we talked to the assistant principals, we want the conversations to be honest and authentic. It can't be a quid pro quo, well, you take care of me, so I'm going to, you know, pad your scores or anything like that, because at the end of the day, the main goal is to put the right leaders in front of our kids and teachers. And if you, if you don't do that, right, then we're hurting everybody. So, or it's going to take longer to be the, the right leader, and we can help that along the way. So this is a, this is a good thing. It's going to be stressful for our campus administrators, but we're here to support them and make sure that everything ties back to the leadership definition and make sure our staff understands where we're going with it. So, thank you, Lisa.
So bottom line, it was very well worth the district participating in Holdsworth.
Absolutely.
Well, considering it was free, yes.
It was free, too.
No.
We liked the price tag.
It's not free moving forward, so I'll, I'll be honest with you, we were very lucky to be in this group. We only have two sessions left, right, December, February?
Two, December and February.
And then the, the price tag for the school districts that come in after us is, I think it's six digits a year or something like that.
We got a good deal.
Yeah, we did.
We did. And we learned a lot, and we learned, we had great collaborative partnerships as well.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Item two is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four High School Catalog Course Presentation.
Ms. Rogers.
Ms. Rogers.
Good evening, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, members of the board. I am here to share with you the changes to the high school catalog, and there are several changes on the sheet that I believe is in your packet, and so I will just go through the ones that I think need some explanation and leave out the ones that I think are pretty straightforward. So starting with the general and core content changes, we've updated language regarding open, open periods to align with our college career and military readiness goals, which I think that you've heard probably Dr. Ott and Dr. Adams speak about. That is a high priority for the district, especially in terms of accountability, and so we want to make sure that our students are scheduled for courses that will allow them to meet the college career military readiness standards. that will allow them to meet the college career military readiness standards. Additionally, you may know that all seniors are required to take economics as a graduation requirement. And so the state has introduced a new course that allows students to get credit for economics, but also if you'll see in the title, get them some instruction in personal financial literacy so that they are able to gain some skills and some knowledge that's very necessary so that they can be successful in terms of their money management as they become adults. And finally, in that section, we've added language regarding the Texas First Early High School Completion Program, which is an initiative of the state to incentivize early graduation for high achieving seniors. We'll skip over athletics and move on to special education. We've worked over the past few years to make sure that none of the language in any of our materials references, anything that would indicate that students involved in that program or course are special education students. And so every time we look through that catalog, which is over 100 pages long, we find a few areas where we've overlooked it. And so I think we've pretty much cleared it out at this point. And so that is what is referenced there. Under Fine Arts, we've added the Musical Theater course at the request of the teachers who wanted to make sure that students who are on the theater pathway and want to take or pursue musical theater education at the university level, that they've gotten instruction in high school that helps them with being prepared to perform in a musical as opposed to a traditional stage play. And then under ESL, I think that when Mrs. Narrows was here, she shared with you all that we are changing our reference of ESL students to emergent bilingual students. So the catalog reflects that change. And finally, we have added under CTE, we're always looking for opportunities to expand options for dual credit for our students. And so we've added cybersecurity and law too through Temple College. And so that is a summary of the changes that you see there. And at this time, I'll take any questions that you have.
Is there any questions on this? All right. Thank you for, appreciate it.
I will see you in December for the middle school catalog.
Yeah. We're looking forward to that Christmas treat. Yes. Item C is facility and operations. One, consideration for approval for guaranteed maximum price GMP with construction of Sampson Howard Elementary School. And Mr. Boyd?
Good evening, Mr. Posey. Thank you, School Board. And excited to have the Cloud family in attendance tonight. So they're here also for this item, I know, and will be happy to share anything if you have questions. Bids were received on October 27th for the construction of Sampson Howard Elementary School. Cloud Construction has compiled all of the bids and prepared a summary of the base project as well as the alternates. And that is all in the information that you have in front of you tonight. We, in addition to the base bid, we solicited pricing for a total of 10 alternates in addition to the base. So tonight, I want to talk through just a couple of things of what the administration's recommendation is for you all. We are recommending acceptance of the base bid of $40,373,145 and the acceptance of four alternates. Like I said, we took, we looked at 10 and settled on four that we believe were most critical and most important. One is the addition of theater lighting equipment in the new black box theater. Another was for wall laminate panels in lieu of tile. And wall laminate, again, that's very, very consistent with what we've done with most of our buildings. Black ornamental fencing in lieu of black final chain link fencing. Again, something that is consistent with what we tried to do at new facilities as much as possible. And then the addition of a metal canopy over the courtyard performance area stage, which will be something that the kiddos will perform on there in the interior courtyard of the facility. Therefore, when you add all of those, those four alternates together with the base, the total recommended GMP for the project is $40,655,250. And obviously, this project will be funded by the 2022 bond funds. One thing I always like to mention, as is customary, the GMP total includes allowances and contingency funds, which if not expended, will return to the district. And we have a track record of being able to do that with our projects, especially those where we've worked with Cloud. So, so anything that, any savings that are found during the process, anything that is not expended as far as a contingency or allowance goes, that will, that will come back to the district at the end of the day. That's a quick summary. Excited about the project. It's been a long time coming for all of us. Do you all have any questions of me or anything that maybe Mr. Cloud could, either of the Mr. Clouds could answer? I'll leave it to the big Mr. Cloud, the adult. Not that you're not an adult. The elder Mr. Cloud.
Exactly. The distinguished Mr. Cloud.
Distinguished, experienced. I'll stop at this point.
So with the adoption of the GMP tonight, we'll start seeing major construction early January or?
Hopefully December.
December, okay, great. Yeah, yeah. Not that we're complaining really, but for that part, yeah, yeah. Okay. This does require approval. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Suarez, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The like sign to oppose. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. The motion is adopted. So this is exciting.
This is exciting. Appreciate all the work and the effort in helping us build this project, to get the budget in line and really looking forward to the real building now.
Right, the hard work, getting ready for this. Thornton is such a beautiful school and appreciate the job y'all did there and getting us in on time too. I know that's, didn't happen by accident.
We're excited about this project. It's a good part of the design. I know it's, it's what first you're saying, new facility here in Temple.
It's the late 90s.
Yeah.
For, yes, for a new campus for growth.
Yeah.
It's really going to be a showplace, a really nice facility. We're also excited because I went through Temple's public schools on my career.
Yeah. Yeah. Strong ties to the district.
True blue. And Travis Sawwood will be working on the project, who has very strong ties in all those ways as well.
We're excited to work with you.
Yeah.
You know that.
Yeah. And looking forward to seeing the final product. That's going to be a jewel of Temple. All right.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item two, consideration for approval of resolution accepting cornerstone donation for the new elementary school.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Those of you on the Facilities Committee know that we've discussed this item several times over the last, the last several months. We, and so what we do, we bring to you tonight a resolution for accepting a cornerstone. Just briefly, what this is. St. James Lodge here in Temple has approached us and desires to donate to the district a cornerstone specifically for Sampson Howard Elementary School. It would also have the names of individuals with the district as well as St. James Masonic Lodge, number 71. And the primary reasons for this and that the district or the administration brings this as a recommendation is because this potential donation has a purpose consistent with district's educational philosophy, goals, and objectives. And specifically, St. James is located in the same East Temple neighborhood, basically, as where Sampson Howard will be built. The Lodge has a history of working with the district, providing school supplies, belts, shirts, monetary donations, graduation caps and gowns, and scholarships to district students who reside in our area. And many of these students will be attending the new Sampson Howard Elementary School. Finally, the acceptance of the potential donation, we hope will encourage continued charitable work by St. James Lodge that benefits the district's students and their families through mentoring and furthering contributions like those mentioned above. So we bring this to you tonight for your consideration. This would again be part of the project as we move forward. If you, if you approve the resolution this evening. Do you have any questions that either any of us could answer on?
Any questions for Mr. Boyd? This does require approval.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Myers?
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Motion approved. Thank you. Appreciate that. Item D is finance. One, public hearing to discuss Temple ISD's rating under the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas First. And Ms. Stafford, welcome.
Mr. Posey, we are here to discuss our first rating, which is the Financial Accountability Rating System of Texas, or commonly known as Texas Schools First. It was developed by TEA and required to have an annual public hearing. The 2021, 2022 Schools First Rating is based on our fiscal year in June 30th, 2021. It's very important to note that this is not based on the fiscal year in that was just presented to you tonight in our financial audit. But this is from the fiscal year prior to the year that we just completed, so two fiscal years ago. You will find a copy of the 2021, 2022 Annual Financial Report included in your Board Packet Materials. The primary objective of the rating system is to assess the quality of financial management in Texas public schools. And a secondary objective is to assure, is to measure and report the extent to which financial resources in Texas public schools assure the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. Other objectives reflect the implementation of a rating system that is meant to fairly inequitably evaluate the quality of financial management decisions. The rating system is comprised of 20 indicators, which you will find on page two of the management report. However, unlike previous rating years, indicators five, 10, and 15 were not scored due to the hardships and uncertainties that school districts faced due to COVID-19 and trying to resume instruction after the 2019, 2020 school year ended so abruptly. The first five indicators on the report are closed questions requiring a yes or no answer and considered critical indicators. Therefore, if we answered no to any of these, we would automatically be assigned an F rating or substantial, substandard achievement. Great news is, this is not the case for Temple ISD. The remaining 15 indicators are designed to measure the district's financial health by determining the ability to pay our debts, the amount of cash on hand, the amount of fund balance maintained, the percent of administrative expenses compared to direct instructional expenditures, staffing levels, the quality of data that is reported to TEA, and the ability to accurately project revenues. Out of these indicators, there are three that we did not earn the maximum amount of points on, and I'm going to discuss those briefly. Indicator number eight measures the ratio of current assets to current liabilities to cover short term debt. Indicator number 11 measures the long term liabilities to total assets ratio to support long term solvency. Each of these indicators have to do with a unique situation at Temple ISD, which I know you guys have heard many times, which has to do with our tax, our participation in our tax increment zone. Although the tax collections are a direct flow through, they are not available for the district's operational use, but the state still accounts for these against our liability ratio. Indicator number 12 measures the ratio of assessed property values to support future debt. Our assessed property values are calculated by a third party entity, which is Bell County Appraisal District. We have no direct control over how these property values are assessed, so we are at their mercy. This is a difficult task, as you can imagine, because we've all seen the recent fluctuations in the real estate market. This indicator is also a challenge for many school districts. I've worked with many of them that have tried to figure out how to do this. And what it is, is to prepare and plan ahead for student enrollment growth, districts must incur debt to improve and build new facilities. It is my prediction that the assessed property values will continue to increase. And this will be an indicator that we will need to watch in the future to see if our ratio improves as well. Additionally, I want to highlight that indicator number seven, which Temple ISD has struggled in the past with, for the, but for the 2020, 2021 year, the total days cash on hand improved to receive the full amount of points this year, which was very, which was, sorry, which was in a very intentional effort on behalf of TISD management. It's a job well done. I am proud to announce that Temple ISD received a total score of 94, which is superior achievement. And this rating shows that Temple ISD is making the most of our taxpayer dollars and that our schools are accountable not only for student learning, but also for achieving these results cost effectively and efficiently. Any questions?
Board, any questions? At this time, this is, this is a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward to speak about the Financial Integrity Rating System? First, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. And Brandy, thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. E is Student Services. One, consideration for approval of staff development minutes waiver. Mr. Hagenberg?
Good evening. Up tonight is the, for your consideration, the state waiver for staff development. You might have remembered several years ago that when the state took the calendar and changed it from days to minutes in order to calculate attendance, this is one of those things that deal with the minutes part rather than the days. They do give us the flexibility so that when we have staff development within the calendar, that we can use those minutes, calculate those minutes that, that we do for staff development to count towards student attendance, those minutes that are required to, that we have to have for a year to count for student instruction. And so usually in the past, we have most of our staff development or almost all of it before school started. Have that in August and then at the, potentially at the end. Last year and this year also, we have a day in January. This year, it's January 2nd for staff development. So that now that it's within the school year, in the past, we couldn't do those prior and after it. So it's within the, when the first bell rings and when the last bell rings, January 2nd counts as that. So we're able to apply for a waiver to have those minutes count towards student attendance. And so this is a waiver. It is an expedited waiver to TEA. And so that is presented tonight for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Eric. Members, any questions? This does require approval.
A motion.
Motion by Mrs. Cook. Seconded by Ms. Suarez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same like, same sign? Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Item F is the Board Committee Reports. One, Facilities Committee Update. Meeting held Thursday, October 27th, 2022 at 4:00 p.m. Mr. Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Board Facility Committee, Mr. Boyd and Mr. Wolf provided an update on several of the projects and property items to be included. There was an elementary playground, athletic facility tour, installing of new lights at the baseball field and softball fields, Temple High School auditorium, audio and videos and sound improvements, and Travis, completion of field construction. Also, design meetings for Western Hills, Wheatley, Edwards, Bonham, and Operations Centers. Abatement of demolition of the New Day Fellowship Church property and finalized the acquisition of the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority property. As the committee unanimously approved the GMP for security vestibules, construction at Kennedy Powell, Hector P. Garcia, Ray Allen, and security enhancements at Thornton and Jefferson. The committee unanimously approved a revised contract for architectural services with Stan Tech. Dr. Adams discussed potential changes to EF Local with the committee. That policy will be presented for consideration at tonight's meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 5:50 p.m. And our next meeting is October, no, I'm sorry, November 17th at 4:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gaines. Item two is the Policy Committee Update. The meeting was held Wednesday, October 26th, 2022 at 4:00 p.m. And the meeting was called to order at 4:01 p.m. A staff, staff development minutes waiver. A staff, staff development minutes waiver was discussed, and what is an action item of tonight's meeting agenda. Potential changes to CH Local and EF Local were discussed. These policies will be presented for consideration at tonight's meeting. Update one nineteen was presented, and selected policy changes were highlighted and discussed. Local policy recommendations within update one nineteen will be presented for consideration at tonight's meeting, and the meeting was adjourned at five oh seven P.M. The next committee meeting will be Wednesday, November sixteenth, 2022, at four P.M. And we will have three policy items for approval tonight. I'll read them all three. B is consideration for approval of update one nineteen. C is consideration for approval of board policy CH Local purchasing and acquisition. And D is consideration for approval of board policy EF Local Instructional Resources. Mr. Hagenberg.
Yes, sir. This is, we'll start off with update one nineteen. The legal policies, this is just for your information, and so I will highlight not all of them, just selected few that of, that is of particular interest to board members and members of the community. And then we'll highlight the local ones, and those are the ones that are presented for consideration, your approval tonight.
Excuse me, do we have approval of update one nineteen, the whole thing, because we have three items?
Yes. Yes, that, those are all included, all in, all in this one. So first, we have BDB Legal, and this deals with the Texas Open Meetings Act. It is now in law that board committee meetings, if they fall under certain requirements, have, fall under the, all the requirements for the the Open Meetings Act. We, as a district, as long as I've been here, have always posted those meetings in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. So that is not a change for how we have been operating, but it is now law. Next is CPC Legal. And this deals with electronic records. Now that a lot of records are done electronically now, the legislature and law has caught up with how they want districts to treat those. And so we are now required to have written policies and procedures for all these records. Which brings us to the companion policy, the CPC Local piece. And this, whereas the legal piece says you have to have a policy in place, the local piece, that is the policy. And the procedures for it have to specifically have objectives, responsibilities of employees, the maintenance of records, and protecting it from unauthorized use. We, even before this happened, our technology department had those in place. And so, it is now in legal policy, and this is presented for local policy adoption also. Next, we have CQA Legal. And this is a requirement that curriculum materials on not only sexual, or human sexuality, but also the prevention of child abuse, family violence, and dating violence now has to be posted, and so that is now something that we have on our website. Next is CS Legal. And this deals with, it is now law that schools must take into account school facility standards under specific circumstances, and one is if a major capital project is within, adopted within the M and O budget. Next is if there was a bond election, and next is if a contract, an existing contract was amended. And for us, this may sound familiar, but part of that plan, you have to have a long-range facilities plan, which is something we've, we have had. And in those plans, it also have, has to have educational specifications, which is something that's already included. Next is DG Legal. You might remember at the, two updates ago, there was a piece where social studies teachers, they could not be compelled to discuss a controversial issue of public policy or social affairs. Well, now, this update, the law has now extended it to not only just social studies, but all teachers in general. So it's expanded from just social studies to the entire staff. Next is DMA Local. And this is a brand-new policy, and this deals with, the board now has to review the public or the professional development clearinghouse, which is now a new requirement from TEA, and well as approve that professional development, development plan. I know Dr. Adams presents that to you every year, and so now this is, you'll be hearing it couched in the terms of professional development clearinghouse from TEA, and as the professional development plan. So that'll, that'll be coming in the near future. Next is EHAA. And this deals with, again, the prevention of child abuse, family violence, dating violence, and sex trafficking. It is now part of the bylaw, part of the responsibilities for SHAC. And so, the companion legal, or the local policy with that. So when there is a change in our district's curriculum for that, the board is going to need to adopt a resolution saying that, to give the SHAC authority to look at it, the SHAC Committee will hold two public hearings, present recommendations, present that to the board, and you would approve it. So if there's any changes in that curriculum, that is the process that will take place in order to make that happen. Next is EHB Local. Again, this is a brand-new policy from scratch. And this, this now requires the district to provide training opportunities for dyslexia teachers, which is something that we already do. Next is let's see here. Excuse me. EHBB Local. This again is a brand-new policy, and this deals with special education at the Meredith Dunbar for the early childhood special education. As they transition, there is now requirement to have a, a plan in place for that. Next, we have EHDF Legal. This is a policy for remote learning, and it's a brand-new policy. All four pages, which will be repealed at the end of this school year. So, for us, it's not very relevant because we are not participating in remote learning this school year. EIF Legal deals with the transcripts and financial aid application requirement. One of the new requirements in the past several years is on the transcript. Students have to show that they have submitted the FASFA or the TASFA. And in law here in the legal, the IEF shows that that we didn't, needed to develop a local policy in order to know what proof of submission that we were, that we were allowing. And so, the companion policy for that, EIF Local, and our recommendation for local policy is to include screenshots of their application, copy of their email that they received that said they were, that they have submitted it, as well as screenshots from any institution or from the organization itself. So those are not, so in local policy, those would be things that we would accept as proof of, that that had, that they had completed that. Next is FFBA. If I can find it. And that deals, again, is a local policy. And it, it now includes the trauma-informed care, which, you know, that's part of our, our crisis, or our student management plans. You know, we have CHAMP's Restorative Practices and Trauma-Informed Care. Now that has to be included in that professional development plan that we had talked about earlier. So you'll see that in the plan. Next is FFH Local. And this particular one in the Freedom of, From Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation Policy, the piece that is added is the Statement of Nondiscrimination. So now that is suggested to be included in local policy. Next, FM Legal. It is now in law, whereas the UIL part of their regulations was that students had to participate in the sports that they were, the sex they were assigned is on their birth certificate. Well, now it is law that outlines that, that they cannot compete, that is opposite of their, their biological sex is stated on their birth certificate at or near the time of birth. So that is now gone from a UIL regulation to law. Next is FNA Legal. And this, now it just reiterated that public schools have a, can, can have a special interest in regulating off-campus speech. And that's particularly when it's, you're talking about bullying or threats or school security, and that's when you're talking the social media pieces of that. And then lastly, we have GKA Legal. One of the policies and, or laws in Texas is open carry. And so, as a district, if we did not want to allow that on premises, we have to post signs that says that that's, to give the the holder notice that that is not allowed on our premises. What this says is that if, for some reason, the notice is not up, or there's an error in the notice, that if that person comes on, we can just simply say it is not allowed, and that gives them the opportunity to leave and not be prosecuted. So that's an addition to GKA. And so those are the policies from update one nineteen. We have two others for your consideration. We have CH Local. And this is, there's two pieces to that. One is the removal of the requirement for notice to the board of purchases twenty-five thousand to fifty. Just a little history on, on that. Our current, that, our current limit is fifty thousand dollars, and that has gone from, it used to be way, long time ago, ten thousand, and now it was, then it was twenty-five thousand. And so in two thousand and ten, when the board changed it to fifty thousand, there was that transition, and so they wanted notice from twenty-five to fifty. So now this is, if approved, that removal is approved, you'll see that, that one item from the consent agenda will no longer be part of the consent. And then the micro-purchase threshold, this was needed to be added for federally, federally funded purchases. And just for your information, that threshold is forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So that's sort of where you get the fifty thousand dollars from the, the previous one. So that's CH Local. And then the last one, EF Local, and this is, talks about instructional resources. Tasby created two different styles. One was all-in-one, and then one was separating out curriculum, resource materials, and then library resource materials. We, as a district, in looking at our processes, we are recommending the single one, and that is the EF Local that is presented. It is, we took pieces from both of those that were relevant to us, to, that matched our existing processes. So there's no real change in how we handle those things. But it does list on one of the pages that the contact for the formal challenge is now listed in here as the Deputy Superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Adams. Whereas that was the normal process before, now it's listed, listed here. And so that is the C, or the FE Local. So tonight, for your consideration, is update one nineteen, CH Local, and EF Local as presented.
Thank you very much, Eric. Lot of material to go over. Members, is there any questions?
I move that CH Local and EF Local and the local policies update one nineteen be approved as presented.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And with that, we're adjourned for the evening. Thank you very much for attending tonight.